This is the billboard industry here, Mayor. The billboard industry. Now, what they want to do is they want to become legal flashers in the, and that's why the ordinance amendments were for you tonight.
He wanted more water than that, Bob, but enough to wet your whistle.
Well, if it's a quick meeting, that's all I'll need. Thank you.
If you need more, just look down and I'll just grab it and pass it down.
I drink a lot of water. I would rather have water with a meal than anything else.
We have the twins.
We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to recognize everyone that's here tonight. Thank you for attending the meeting and also those that are watching the meeting or will be watching the meeting on G-10 television. We're going to begin tonight with the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask members of the Rolling Thunder, Chapter 5, if you would lead us in the pledge tonight, and we'll follow that with the invocation by our city attorney. Please rise. Y'all can come on up front. Give you a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My heavenly Father, as always, we pause at this time to give you thanks. To give you thanks for all the blessings you bestow upon us individually and the blessings you bestow upon our city, the city of Jacksonville. Tonight, however, we want to give a special thanks. A special thanks for you sparing our community some of the flooding and devastation and loss of life that we've seen in neighboring communities and counties from Hurricane Matthew. And as we raise this prayer of thanksgiving, we pray for those who are having to pick up the pieces to move forward. We pray for those who are having to serve there and their county commissioners and their cities to help those folks see a brighter tomorrow. May your presence be with each one of those so dramatically affected by this hurricane. Tonight also, we pause to give thanks for the life, the life of Louis Sewell, for his service to this city, to the state on the DOT, and for all he meant to many of us here. He was truly a public servant, and we give thanks and pray for his family during this hour of their mourning. As always, we pray for our military who are serving us here and around the world for their safety and for their anxious families. And always give your guidance and your direction to our council and all of their deliberations. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Counsel, you have before you a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, and I would like for you to add a consent item, this being an NC DOT mowing contract to the consent agenda.
You approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have a few presentations to make tonight. I'd like to recognize or call up David Lynch, President of the Rolling Thunder. If you could join me up front here. And I know you have a lot of your folks here with you tonight. Did you want them to come up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's do that. They're all dressed out. I hate for them to get all dressed up and not do anything. No place to go. That's right, Gene. For the sixth year in a row, the Department of Veterans Affairs has designated the city of Jacksonville as an official regional site for Veterans Day observances. Jacksonville is one of approximately 57 communities out of 33 states to have received this honor, and is only, is one of the only four designated sites in North Carolina. Our Rolling Thunder chapter here organizes the city's annual Veterans Day parade, which will be held Saturday, November 5th, at 10:00 a.m. I'm looking forward to it, and I hope you are too. Please come out on Western Boulevard and watch the parade. You'll be amazed.
Here's the certificate, sir, from the Veterans Day National Committee hereby designating the city of Jacksonville as a regional site for observance of Veterans Day 2016. Yes, sir?
So how many, tell me about, how many floats you're going to have?
We've got 12 or 13 floats and about over 800 people participating in the parade so far.
Very good. So again, let's get that date right. It's the 5th of November.
5th of November.
At 10 o'clock a.m., down Western Boulevard.
Down Western Boulevard.
Okay.
Come out and see us.
Come out and see them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you. All right, let's see. Oh, war. Okay. You. I need you up here. Counsel, if y'all want to join us up front here, I'm going to read some, I'm going to read some stuff here. Hopefully, it's all true. It is with a great deal of pleasure that I'm able to recognize Councilman Jerry Bittner tonight for his longevity of service to this city. Councilman Bittner began his service with the city in September of 1987, serving as the city manager until his retirement in April of 1999. During his nearly 12 years as a city manager, he worked diligently with the mayor and council to accomplish many important and innovative projects here in Jacksonville and for the citizens' benefit, including the annexation of Camp Lejeune Marine Corps Base, the purchase of land, and then future development of the Jacksonville Commons Recreation Complex, and the land treatment system project, a cutting-edge technology that enabled the city to move forward with the cleanup of efforts of Wilson Bay and the New River. Not long after his retirement in September of 2001, the city council appointed him to a vacant council member seat. He was subsequently elected for another term, serving as a council member cumulatively to date for nearly 14 years, with five of those years serving as mayor pro temp. There have been many accomplishments in the city during his elected service, including the redevelopment of the city hall that we're in tonight, construction of the Richard Ray All-America Park, the Public Works and Utilities Facility, the Freedom Fountain, Jacksonville Landing, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, the Montford Point Marine Memorial, Phase 1 of the Museum of the Marines, Fire Station Number 2, and the Center for Public Safety, just to name a few. During his 25 years of total service to the city, he has served as a member of the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Policy Committee and the Regulatory Advisory Committee of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. He has served as a member of the Onslow Civic Affairs Committee for seven years, and he has represented the city on the Onslow Water and Sewer Authority for 13 of the 16 years that Onslow has been in existence. He has served as council liaison to the Fire Advisory Board, Fire Safety Advisory Board, and he continues to serve as a council liaison to the Board of Adjustment. Jerry Bittner has continually dedicated his time and talents to making Jacksonville the best it can be for our citizens, and I am so proud to present him with his 27-year, or 25-year longevity recognition. I had to take my pulse. I thought I was rehearing my eulogy for a minute. I want you all to know that all these accomplishments, which you're giving me credit for, not really so. I built a lot of my efforts on the brains and energy of a lot of city employees and members of the city council and past mayors. And for them, I owe to them my longevity, particularly the city employees, and to the people of Jacksonville who have, I hope, understood that I always try to serve them to the best of my ability. So I thank you for this recognition. Well, I have to say, he's the best city manager I ever served under, but you're the best city manager that has served under us. Today.
You did notice that Mr. Bittner and I are dressed very similar. It's just he has the flamboyant shirt. He is.
He's very small.
Okay. A great deal of pleasure here, and this one, too, also. Now, I will save that paper in case I need it on down the road. Years from now, years from now. I'd like to ask Chief Mike Yanero, our Director of Public Safety, to come forward. Is George Barrows here tonight? I did not see him. He's still, is he still recovering? He's recovering? Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. Well, chief, let's see here. Let's hold on just a minute here. Ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. It's not bad. It's nothing, it's nothing bad. Don't worry about it. This evening, we have a very special presentation that wasn't on the agenda. It was kind of hidden from you, and you were brought here under a ruse. I'll have to say that. But I want to tell, I want to tell you a little bit about this guy here, our Director of Public Safety, Mike Yanero. We'll do a little bit of the bio here. Mike is a graduate of East Tennessee State University with a BS degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in police studies. He is also a graduate of the FBI National Academy and the Harvard and Police Executive, and the Harvard and Police Executive Research Forum's Senior Management Institute for Police. He is certified by the American College of Forensic Examiners as a law enforcement expert. He was the first law enforcement officer in the country and the first person in East Tennessee to receive the FBI Director's Community Leadership Award. Mike also received the Bristol Rotary Club's Four Way Test Award, Officer of the Month by the National Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement's Memorial Fund, and he is a recipient of the Golden Eagle Man of the Year Award from the Greater Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of In October of 2004, Mike was appointed as the Chief of Police for the city of Jacksonville, and in July 2012 was named the Director of Public Safety when the city of Jacksonville Police and Fire Departments merged into the Department of Public Safety. Since becoming the Director, Mike has been instrumental in implementing numerous programs such as the Children's Advocacy Center, the Gang Resistance Education and Training Program, or GREAT, as it's referred to, Community Officer and Community Response Teams, the Holiday Task Force, Public Safety Officers, Public Safety Officers, who are trained civilian staff to handle administrative matters to free officers for patrol duties, instituted the Citizens Police Academy, the Center of Public Safety Motorcycle, or yes, the Center of Public Safe, for Public Safety Motorcycle Unit, Neighborhood Watch Programs, School Resource Officers, and National Night Out. He has also worked closely with local law enforcement agencies such as state and federal task forces to address criminal drug activities for stricter sentences for these crimes. The U.S. Secret Service to aid in investigations involving computers, phones, and other devices, Naval Criminal Investigative Services with partnerships for Carolina Field Offices for Seamless Law Enforcement Services onboard base and off, and the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce to provide law enforcement outreach to the businesses, to the business community on emerging topics, as well as the faith community to provide support and outreach to strengthen that partnership. In addition, Mike has worked to obtain grants in order to fund staffing and equipment for initiatives such as Project Safe Neighborhood, which reduces gun violence and gangs, Weed and Seed, which prevents and reduces violent crime, and Traffic Enforcement to reduce crashes and fatalities in the city. That's a lot of stuff you've done in those 12 years. The Order of the Long Leaf Pine is awarded to persons for exemplary service to the state of North Carolina and their communities that is above and beyond the call of duty and which has made a significant impact and strengthened North Carolina. Mike Yanero is a prime example of someone who deserves this award. And on behalf of the Governor of the state of North Carolina, it is my pleasure to present to you this award for the Order of the Long Leaf Pine. He has done an incredible job, and we've been very blessed to have him in our community, and hopefully, we're going to keep him for some time to come. So now, I'm going to give the mic to him. Would you like to say a few things?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm humbled by this. I didn't expect it, but, and you know, it's really not about me. It's about, it's about the staff, and it's about the you and the council. You know, I talk to my counterparts every day across this state, and you know, I hear about the things that go on in their communities, and I, and I feel how blessed I am to be here, to be here with a council that's so supportive, a city management team that's so supportive, and a staff that's so supportive. You know, you know, they work tirelessly every single day to make our community better, and you know, they deserve that because, you know, they're the ones out pounding the pavement and answering the 911 calls and rushing into those fires, and it's, it's, it's just an honor to be part of that organization. And I thank you for the support that you've given in a lot of the good things that we've done over the last year.
I do want to say a couple more things on behalf of the Governor. I know that Governor McCrory, when this was presented to him, Governor McCrory, you know, doesn't like to give these things out very often. He wants it to be exemplary service. And you know, during these times in which law enforcement has really been getting a bad rap because of a few mistakes made by a few officers, you know, Governor McCrory saw Mike Yanero, our police chief, our Director of Public Safety, as being exemplary of what a community police officer should be, and on behalf of the Governor, I wanted to pass that information on to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, we're going to form two lines, folks. Let's go. Two lines. Yeah, it's going to like one line here, one line there.
Always. This recognition by the Governor gives you the honor to be able to give. It says, "With the rank of Ambassador Extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to, to, I can't even see it. What's that say?
You got your glasses on, I don't.
Okay, to propose the following toast, North Carolina toast, in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the long leaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow weak. Good, great, excuse me, where the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. That's a nice little toast. Anyway, thanks again. Very good.
Congratulations, Mike. Well deserved.
Also, Mike, that commits you to at least another five years, 10 years before you can retire.
He agreed. I heard him.
Yep, I heard it too. That's wonderful. And I want to thank George Barrows. George is the one that initiated this, and he wasn't able to be here tonight because George has been under the weather here lately, and I hope him a speedy recovery because he is certainly a very community-oriented gentleman who has the best of the, you know, the best interests of the city in mind also. Thank you, George. All right, so we have public, let's see, right, yeah, public comment. I have no one signed up. Has anybody had gotten the urge to speak? Fernando?
Yes, if you'll tell, well, she knows who you are.
Yeah, my name is Fernando Shuffel, but I'd just like to remind everyone of the Beirut Memorial that's coming up on Sunday this year. It's going to be held at 1400, 2:00 p.m. at the Leger Memorial Gardens. I also want to mention what a great team effort it was to get that place the way it is now. I've never seen so many city people, crews and base crews and all the volunteers that took time to get out there and make that place, the whole gardens look as fabulous as it does. So I'd like to thank everyone for doing that, and please come out and witness the event. It's a very historical event every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to move along here. Find my place here. We're going to look at adopting the minutes and consent items here. We have a September 20th, 2016 regular meeting, and we have five consent items on here. Could I get a motion on that? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, I know that a lot of you came here for the presentations tonight, and we're going to get into the meat of the meeting here. I'm going to take a quick break here so that you can hightail it out of here if you want to, but by all means, you're welcome to stay. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you. it's a Gateway, Gateway Marketplace LLC Development Agreement, and this is going to be presented by Dr. Woodruff.
Mayor, Members of City Council, several months ago, the city was contacted by a potential developer who is looking at property immediately adjacent to property which the city owns on Western Boulevard. The graphic which is in front of you shows Western Boulevard, and as you can see in the road that's generally at the bottom, that is Gateway North. The property between Gateway North and the area that is in green that's identified as Gateway Marketplace LLC is city property. Over the last several months, the potential developer of Gateway Marketplace has conducted a series of market studies as well as conducted the required traffic impact analysis. That traffic impact analysis shows a significant number of roadway improvements which will be required. One of those improvements, though, addresses the need to have an additional access point from the proposed development down through the city property down to Gateway North. That is the area shown in blue. That is a proposed road. In order for this to happen, we have a development agreement requirement. And what that development agreement does is it stipulates all of the responsibilities of the various parties. I'll go back to the graphic. You will notice in your agenda packet that there is a development agreement that's proposed. In general, what that says is the specific responsibilities of the developer and the responsibilities of the city. From the city's standpoint, our only responsibility is to provide the land. It is the developer's responsibility to totally develop a two-lane road within a 60-foot area. It's not an easement, we're just calling it an area. There also considerations must be given to stormwater management and other improvements. The road must be built to the standards of the MSSD of the city. Overall, the benefit that the city will receive are twofold. Number one, it will create two parcels of city property that are now serviced by a public road. Number two, the construction of that road system will enable us to potentially sell city property at a higher price, because what you're now creating is an internal circulation system. And of course, from a public standpoint, one of the real benefits is the fact that persons can now go from the commons into the marketplace development when it occurs without having to get out on Western Boulevard. The development agreement stipulates the specific approvals, I'm sorry, the specific responsibilities. It also stipulates a timeline. You're required, as the developer, they are required to construct all of these facilities, including a stormwater pond to serve this road, within a three-year period. Under certain conditions, that can be extended by one year. That three-year period literally begins this evening if you approve it. So from a financial standpoint, the gain to the city is, number one, a public improvement that someone else is paying for at no expense to the city other than providing the land. Second benefit to the public is we're now creating two frontage lots of acreage so that in the future, we can sell that property for retail or some private development. Number three, it enables the private developer who is on the area to the north, Gateway Marketplace, to proceed with a development that's going to create substantial tax base for our community. City Attorney has worked with me and with their attorney, the attorney for Gateway Marketplace LLC, and we're here this evening to answer any other questions. We would recommend adoption of the development agreement. Mr. Attorney, do you have other comments?
Yes, sir. Counsel, any questions to Dr. Woodruff?
Is the road in blue, that's going to go further than the blue, right? It's not going to...
Yes, sir. If you, if you were to have on this graphic their development plan, you would see that it ties into the internal circulation system for the large-scale development that will occur on their potential property. And again, they have the property under contract, they have not purchased the property, they have options to purchase. Their attorney is here who can further explain that if needed. But yes, Mr. Thomas, it will connect to an internal circulation system that will eventually get all the way up to Henderson Extension Extension.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Woodruff.
Thank you.
We're going to conduct the public hearing, a required public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this matter? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Tom Johnson. I'm the attorney for the developer, Gateway Marketplace. My address is 4141 Park Lake Avenue, Suite 200 in Raleigh. I just want to thank the city manager and city attorney for working so well with us to get this done. They were true professionals and, and helped immensely in reaching this point, and Mr. Woodruff was on point in terms of what this accomplishes, and I'm just available to answer any questions that Mayor or Council may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else present wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the development agreement, thereby documenting the responsibilities of the developer and the city relative to these improvements.
Mayor Phillips, I'll make the motion to approve the attached development agreement as presented.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Wardner?
I travel that road, Highway North, several times a day, and, and short-term, I think we're going to be, as that develops, I think there's potential to negatively impact the traffic. However, that's one of the, the happy byproducts, I think, of growth and development, but it, it is, it is something that we've talked about in the, the Transportation Metropolitan Planning Organization, the local transportation board, if you will, and we know what's going to happen. We, we need it to, to, we need to actually show some increased traffic in that area in order to help improve some traffic. And I know the plans are to extend Henderson Drive out a little further out to hopefully Ramsey Road at some point in the future, so. So, you know, it's bittersweet in some ways, and, and short-term, I think it's going to hurt a little bit traffic-wise, but long-term benefit.
Any other discussion? All right. Here, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Brings us to Agenda Item Number Six. This is a public hearing on a MAP amendment for rezoning from residential multifamily, low-density residential multifamily to corridor commercial. This is 523 Freedom Way. Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Agenda Item Six is a rezoning request submitted by Ms. Annette F. Metz. The property is located at 523 Freedom Way. Misplaced vicinity map. It's near, at the corner of Tallman Circle and Freedom Way, Highway 24. A little history on this is Ms. Metz, his son came into the office looking to do something with the property. It has historically been used commercially, it's always been in order repair. He inquired about doing some retail there. At, at times, staff investigated and found out the property was actually zoned residential multifamily, low-density, and this was a product of the 2003 ETJ expansion the city did. At that time, it was zoned RM5. So staff reviewed the Camelane use plan in adjacent properties, as you'll notice on this map before you with the existing zoning. Those properties going back towards the city corporate, you'll notice that they are zoned corridor commercial. The Camelane use plan has identified this entire area as mixed-use, therefore it does support a request for rezoning to corridor commercial. If, if approved, this is what the parcel would look like with the adjacent properties shown. At the Planning Advisory Board, they reviewed and have recommended approval along with staff, finding, with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning would advance the public interest by allowing for more orderly and logical development. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Counsel, any questions to Mr. Smith? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting and open the required public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this matter? If so, raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed request here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request based on findings of fact A through J, and that the rezoning advances the public interest in allowing a more logical development.
Motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven. This is a public hearing for a MAP amendment for rezoning from residential single-family 20 to corridor commercial, 1610 and 1602 Wilmington Highway and 111 Kennedy Road. And Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is a similar situation, just on the opposite side of town. This is the vicinity map as shown before, noting the location at the Wilmington Highway, the service road that is on the other side of the wall, and the bypass and Kennedy Road. Mr. Fred Beecham submitted this rezoning request for part of a building on a parcel adjacent to A1 storage, or A1 cleaners at the corner of Kennedy and Wilmington Highway. Again, this is a product of the 2003 ETJ expansion. At that time, the property was zoned RS, RA20. However, it had historically been used for commercial for several years as a warehouse storage, along with the A1 cleaners at the corner. So looking at Mr. Beecham's request, staff identified the two adjacent parcels and wanted to include those to correct the nonconformity. Back up to the area, you'll note at the corner, A1 cleaners is on two parcels, and then the large, larger black building is owned by Mr. Beecham, that is the warehouse side. The Camelane use plan again supports this by identifying this entire area as mixed-use, so therefore a request to rezone to corridor commercial is supported. This is what the parcels would look like with the adjacent properties shown if rezoned to CC. At their meeting, the Planning Advisory Board, along with staff, is recommending approval with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, and again, finding that this rezoning advances the public interest by allowing for more orderly and logical development. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions to Mr. Smith? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recess the regular council meeting, open the required public hearing in this matter. Is anyone present wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the proposed rezoning.
Mayor Phillips, I move that we approve the rezoning with findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative, that the rezoning also advances the public interest.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Here, none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eight. This is a public hearing regarding the Uniform Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, Article 5 Development Standards, Section 5.12 signage, billboards, Section 7.6 nonconforming signs and billboards, and Article 9.3 definitions. And Ryan King will be presenting this item. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. As you may recall, back in, I believe it was March of this year, city staff brought forth a UDO text amendment based on a recent court case to prohibit specifically, and very clearly in our ordinance, prohibit LED or changeable message boards on billboards. As a result of that meeting, city staff has, over the last several months since April, we have sat down on numerous occasions with both Fairway and Lamar Advertising, who own the majority of the billboards within the city of Jacksonville. And just to kind of orient everybody, the green areas, the city's ETJ, the blue areas, the city limits on the screen before you. The triangles represent the 89 billboards, which equates to 166 faces, and the area in red is the billboard overlay zone. So the red area is the only location where the billboards can be placed. We do have some outside of those areas due to being there before the billboard overlay zone was adopted. So in some cases, in many cases, they're nonconforming. As a result of the discussions that we've had over the last several months, both Fairway and Lamar Advertising has submitted a zoning text amendment that we have before you this evening, and I'll go over some of the highlights of those changes. As I stated before, we added language prohibiting the LED billboards, which would allow us the opportunity to sit down with the representatives, which we have done, which leads us to tonight's The applicant's request basically states that they would be allowed to convert up to 10% of their inventory billboard faces. And as you recall on a previous slide, I put how many billboard faces there were, because in some cases, you have a one-sided billboard versus a two-sided. So there's 166 faces total in the city's jurisdiction. So each company would be able to, to upgrade 10% of their billboard faces to LED. There's also a provision that says if I sell some of my inventory to another company, then the number of LED billboards that I can have would also reduce accordingly, and that maintains that 10% maximum cap that is being proposed with this amendment. The maximum height would remain at 40, that's a current standard. However, if they have an existing 60-foot tall billboard and they want to change out that billboard face to an LED, they would be required to reduce the height down to 40 feet. Under the provisions of this ordinance, the maximum size is currently set at 400 square feet. As with the height, if they want to convert a 678-square-foot or 600-square-foot billboard to LED, they would have to reduce it down to no more than 400 square feet. So as you can see, if they convert these, we'll get a little bit shorter billboards, and we'll get a little bit smaller billboards if they are converting a larger or taller The billboards will also have technology designed to basically freeze the message if there's a technical glitch or basically discontinue. That way, if there's a glitch in the system, it won't be doing something crazy. Basically, it'll go black, or it'll go to a static where the message will not change. The proposed duration that is identified within this ordinance is 15 seconds, so every 15 seconds, it will be able to change to a new message. However, there's a provision that we are adding similar to the Wilmington model that states if the billboard industry, the owner of that billboard agrees to display public emergency messages on the billboard, they can reduce or increase the frequency in which it can change to every eight seconds. And that's something that they use for Amber Alerts. I think some of them were used with the most recent hurricane and flooding event where they can post, you know, use alternate routes or things like that. Basically, what's defined in the text under the, I believe it's called out in, in the exhibit here, is a public emergency message. Lighting standards, to make sure that they're not too bright, this is kind of an industry standard as it relates to the billboards. If the existing billboard is proposed to be changed out to LED, there's a substantial amount of new weight that would go on that structure, so they would have to have that structure. So they would have to have that structure analyzed by a design professional to ensure that the additional weight could be added to that billboard. If it could not be, then in line with the state general statutes for modernization, they would be able to drop that pole and replace it with a new sturdy pole that would accommodate the additional weight. In conjunction with this, there is some general statutes that deals with basically the ability to cut within the DOT right-of-way, and we just made reference to that, and then we added the definition, as I stated a second ago, what the public emergency message would be defined as. That being said, we have representatives from both Lamar and Fairway who are the applicants for this agenda item that, I'm not sure exactly, I guess Conrad Piler, would you be representing Fairway this evening?
Sure.
And then Doug?
Doug Noble.
Doug Noble with Lamar is here as well. We did invite one of the other billboard industry folks. They had, I think, two signs or two billboards. These two folks have the lion's share of the number of billboards in Jacksonville. So of those 89 billboards, I think between Fairway and Lamar, they have about 80 of That's all that I have at this time. Do you have it answer any questions that you may have now?
Mr. King?
You referenced the Wilmington model.
Yes, sir.
Do they use a 10%?
I can't say that they use the 10% on that particular one. That was as it relates to the public emergency message about being able to have the message changed more frequently.
Okay, well, I was asking about the 10% rule that we got.
I believe it's 40.
40%.
I believe it's a 40% cap. But they also have some different standards about gateways moving billboards from location A to B and B to C.
Their attorney will address that. Any other questions, Mr. King? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
At this time, I will recess the regular council meeting and open up public hearing on this since it is a zoning text amendment. Is there anyone present wishes to speak to this matter?
My name is Conrad Piler with Fairway Outdoor Advertising. Our team is in full support of this text amendment, and I'd like to be able to at least communicate our full and respectful appreciation of this process. I think that when we first approached this project, we had a lot of ideas from both sides, and it was definitely a nice exercise for us to be able to find a text amendment that was going to be able to merge those two ideas in a positive way for this community. You have the Wilmington ordinance with 40%, but I really feel like for Jacksonville, this is a nice baby step to see how the community will react to this kind of, this kind of usage. So we're very happy with this, and we look forward to seeing what it will bring. Thank you.
I'm Doug Noble, Lamar Advertising, and we are in support as well. Appreciate all the help from the city and in the process. It was, it was, it was a good process, and we appreciate all the support.
Thank you. Since I have no other takers, I'm going to close the public hearing in this matter and convene the regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the zoning text amendment.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning text amendment.
Second. No motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have another section of public comment. Has anyone come in after the sheet was taken up, want to speak at public comment? All right, we'll move on to the agenda item number nine here. This is designation of voting delegates at the National League of Cities Conference for their annual business meeting. So I would, you know, we have Councilmember Jerome Willingham and Councilwoman Angela Washington who are currently registered to attend the NLC Congress of Cities. So have you all decided who you want to be the voting delegate?
I'll be the voting delegate since I'm on the HD committee.
Okay, is there any other nominations?
The nomination to be closed, and we accept that by affirmation.
Is that legal, what I did?
Oh, is that legal? Yeah.
Second. Any other discussion? Ms. Washington and Mr. Willingham, please second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Angela. Pretty simple, wasn't it? Could have made them arm wrestle. Yeah. Well, she's here, he's not, so. Yeah, that's right. You win, just, you win the prize for being here. All right, so we're going to go to the reports next, and I'm going to start down here with Councilmember Ward.
No report, sir, just proud to be here.
I'm proud to have you here. Councilman Todd?
I'll say a couple of things. I just want to kind of reiterate what John mentioned in invocation. I was, I thought it was kind of interesting how the week of the storm, we started out, and it was coming, it was coming, and then about the middle of the week, they said, oh, it's not going to come. It's going to veer out, you know, the experts were telling us this great path, and so then we relaxed for a couple of days, and then you find out what really happens. So I guess you can listen to the experts, but sometimes you got to wait and see what happens. And also, I want to express my personal, probably the group's condolences to the friends and family of Louis Sewell. I think a lot of what he did in the public sector is well-known. But when I met Louis, he was a principal at Northwoods Middle Junior High, Junior High School. And, you know, even though he was a principal, he wielded a lot of influence with the Board of Education. At least I remember when he used it on me. Anyway, a great, extraordinary individual, sorely missed. I remember when he visited us here last, recognized all of us and had something nice to say about all of us, and he'll be missed. Thank you.
Just want to reiterate my appreciation for the recognition this evening. Quite a shock. And again, appreciate the opportunity to have worked over those 25 years with so many fine people, including the mayor and councils and the employees. Really appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Mayor Protielis, all right.
And I too, Mayor, very quickly, you know, talk about Mr. Sewell, all the years and advice that he has given has been instrumental, but I think it's important to note, having been part of the transportation process, the significant impact he's had in this community for generations of the future. I mean, he brought to Jacksonville some wonderful improvements that, that will serve so many in the future, and how difficult it is to get those projects in a, in a small community like ours, all these bypasses and roads that he was able to bring here and sort of put us on the map. It's significant, because if you look at your triad areas, your Rawleys and Greensburles and Charlotte, that soak up, you know, majority of the funding mechanism, you know, we were very fortunate to have him on our behalf, and I think it needs to be recognized that it will have a lasting impact into the future, so he will be missed, and, and his mentorship, so. Thank you, that's all I have.
I'm going to, I'm going to say also, as far as Mr. Louis Sewell's concerned, he's going to be missed in this community. I've known, known Mr. Sewell for a long time, just like you, Randy, and ever since I got into the political area, he's always been good for a little bit of advice from here, from, you know, different things, and always enjoyed listening to his stories, even about when he was selling News and Observers here in Jacksonville to start off with, you know, making his money for college. I want to say this about Louis Sewell, he was a fine gentleman, and he will be missed in this community. And my compassion and sorrow goes out to his family, and he will, like I said, he will be missed. I do want to remind everybody about the Beirut Observance this Sunday at 2:00 PM at the Beirut Memorial. I think Major General Miller will be the guest speaker this, this year. Also, we have Oktoberfest this weekend. Oktoberfest is going on in the Riverwalk Park, so anybody that, you have some spare time on your hands, go down there, and I'm sure you'll have a good time. With that, Dr. Woodruff.
Welcome, Council. Would like to thank the public for the assistance they gave in the storm recovery. As has been mentioned by several, we were fortunate to wake up on Sunday morning with very little storm damage, but the public was extremely cooperative relative to traffic issues and safety issues, and we appreciate that. I'd also like to publicly commend the city staff. Many of you know the work, well, all of you know the work that the city staff does every day. The public really assumes that things are going to work out, but I can tell you how proud I was to see the city staff work through the storm to make sure that sewer lift stations were kept to a minimum as far as problems, that traffic lights were back and operational as quick as possible. When you look at the investment each of us make in our taxes, and then you look at the return you get every day in the services, I don't believe that there's a community anywhere that is more fortunate. We are, we are blessed by the quality, the dedication of the employees you have at the city of Jacksonville. On Mr. Sewell, I'd like to tell you a quick story. He called me one day, I hadn't been here very long, and he asked me if I'd come to his house. So I did. And he said, I understand you're raising money for something called the Freedom Fountain. Tell me about it. So I did. He said, I want you to look me in the eye. I said, yes, sir, I will. Is this thing going to get built? I said, yes, sir, you have my pledge, it will be built, because the mayor and council have already spoken and said they will build it and then get repaid by the public. He said, in that case, I pledge you $25,000. He will be missed. Mayor, Council, thank you all for your service.
I don't think I can say any more than has been said. Thank you, Mayor. No report. For half a living, a long time. 27 years.